Here, I'll call this meeting to order. Appreciate all of you being here tonight. We waited just for you Barry.
Hi Barry.
All right. I'll open up tonight with a prayer please. Everybody will bow. Dear Lord, thank you so very much for all of our blessings. Thank you for watching over us and protecting us. Help us tonight to make very good decisions for this city. Let us do what's right for it. Lord, watch over us and protect us and help us to do what's right for one another as citizens and watch us over these holiday seasons that are upcoming during November and protect all of us. All of us, we pray in your name. Amen. All right. Next roll call please.
Oh, it's Iser.
Here.
Evans.
Here.
Hardwick.
Here.
Hasty.
Here.
Kerr.
Here.
Wessel.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Silkwood.
Here.
Slattery.
Here.
That makes nine present.
All right. Thank you very much. Next is public comments, agenda items only. No one signed up. I'll ask, was anybody intending to speak or just overlooked it? All right. We'll move on to the next acceptance of the agenda. Everybody look below. You only have one thing on the consent agenda. Any issues with it? If not, I'll accept a motion.
Second.
Got a motion, got a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the minutes from October 7th. I'm sure everybody's had time to look at that. Do I have a motion to accept?
Show move.
Do I have a s- I got a motion and a second. Everybody in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Obstain.
All right. One abstention. All right. Next consent agenda. Southview Professional Plaza Lot Number Three Site Plan. Owner John Evans. Location 1209 Saundersville Road, Parcel 146 004.20.
He is actually not current owner of that.
May I speak?
Yeah.
I think you better.
I've got to tell a little story. Several years ago, before I was on the planning commission, my wife told me that if you want to control the piece of property next to you, the best thing you can do is buy it. So, in the Southview subdivision, I've worked with the Tennessee Risk Management Trust and I worked with them to get them to move there. But I bought the lot next door because I wanted to make sure that we had the right neighbors. So, a few weeks ago, I sold that lot to another gentleman who's here tonight to make this presentation and that lot is not mine at this point. I don't know how it got my name on it, but it's not mine. But obviously, I was satisfied with the neighbor we found, so leave that as it is.
Very good. Thank you for clearing it up. Lead planning staff is Timothy Whitten. Timothy?
Thank you Chairman.
And we will, just a note, we'll correct that in the actual record. I think it was still in the PVA and that's where the name came out, but we'll correct that. That's no problem. Thank you.
So, this is the third lot in the Southview Professional Plaza, which is a total of four lots. Third lot to develop. It's owned to office plan development. This will be a single story, 7,483 square foot office building, 32 parking spaces. Building architectural materials should fit in nicely with the other two buildings that are out there.
All right. Any questions from the commissioners? Do we have the applicant up? Would you like to stand up and speak?
Drew Ferguson, Greenland Design. We agree to all staff comments here to answer any questions.
All right. Anybody up here for questions?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Just one. Hi, thank you. Thank you for being here and thank you for continuing to develop the land and taking it off of John's hands. Just curious, if 23 parking spaces are required, why are you going ahead and filling out with 32? You know, I distinctly remember, this is less for you and more for my colleagues. I distinctly remember Jay Ritterback, our Economic Development Director, talking about the over paving that we see in some of these projects. So, I'm just curious why you're increasing this by almost 50%?
We're doing it so that we can, you know, obviously have parking along the sidewalk there. I think just to kind of fill out that space.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
And I would point out, there is a master plan over all these four lots and that master plan did show this parking layout, so it is in conformance with that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other commissioners have questions? Comments? All right. Thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion. Okay, I have a motion with all staff comments please. Somebody?
Motion with all staff comments.
Okay. And I have a second over here. All right, we'll do this one by electronic vote.
Motion pass with eight yeses, one abstain.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Next, development plans. We have, the first one up is TBN Millenia Cottages Final Development Plan. Owner Trilogy Asset Investments Incorporated. Location is 645 East Main Street, Parcel 158A, A008. Okay. And the lead planning is Timothy and Zachary. Which one's taking this one? Timothy? Go ahead Tim.
So, this is the final development plan for TBN Music City, which is the follow-up to the preliminary development plan, which received approvals from the city last year. So, this final development plan does have some changes from that PDP and the highlights of those changes are, they have eliminated the assisted, the large assisted living facility, which is the brown building at the top of the image there, which had 80 assisted living units in it. They've eliminated that. They've expanded the independent living cottages from 90 to 110 units. So, 55 cottages, 110 units of independent living cottages. They're replacing the old barn with a new storage facility, which will be under 5,000 square feet. They've reduced the two office out parcels along Main Street to just one at the corner of Cordell and East Main. They've removed the chapel, added a small cafe at the pickleball courts. They've increased the length of the sidewalks along Affirmed to give the Bluegrass Downs and Winston Hills residences direct pedestrian access to the First Baptist Church. They are requesting a waiver. There's any ordinance does not allow garages to be counted towards required parking for townhomes and duplexes. TBN is requesting that to be waived for the independent living cottages and to allow one space in the garage and one in the driveway for unit types A through E. So, unit F, which is the last remaining unit, it does, they do provide two spaces at each driveway. So, those units are okay, but they need the waiver for units A through E to allow, to be allowed to count the garage towards their required parking. And should this get approved tonight, the next step in the process is site plan approval, which is where they come before you with a much more detailed plan. They have more detailed building elevations and parking layouts and things like that. That's all I've got.
All right. Commissioner Slattery, I see you're in the queue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Timothy, units A through E, how many of the 110 units being proposed? What does that represent? A through E?
So, that would be 100 units.
Oh. Oh.
The last 10 would be unit F.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Martin?
I was just going to see if Keith Free could articulate why our language, you know, doesn't include the garage space.
The reason that it doesn't, several years ago, we allowed garage space on anything, you know, that counted toward the two parking spaces. But one of the things that we realized is that on a lot of different developments, areas were being underparked. So, we're having residential neighborhoods that were being underparked and especially when we had a higher density development, you know, you ended up with people parking in the street and it really wasn't really meant for parking in the street and that type of thing. So, what we did is for single-family homes and for townhomes, we said, hey, you know, if you've got carports or garages, we'd love for you to have that, but we're not going to count that toward the two-car parking requirement. And that's where that came up. And then, in the actual table where it talks about the parking requirements and says how many you've got to have and how it's got to be calculated, independent living itself doesn't necessarily require the spaces in the garage not to be counted, but since this is an independent living facility that is made up of duplexes, then it does, because duplexes do have this requirement. Therefore, that's why they're asking. If this was all single-family detached and it was independent living, it'd be, it'd run into the same thing. The only type of independent living that wouldn't require a waiver for this would be actually like apartments that were independent living, then you could have garages for those and those would count toward the parking spaces. So, it was done initially for those things so that we reduce the amount of kind of bleed over of cars parking in the streets. And a lot of folks, I'm not necessarily saying this, this might be a little different since it's a 55 and older community, but you know, typically, when someone has a one-car garage or even a two-car garage, a lot of people store stuff in there and, you know, they park outside the garage. And so, that's what we see quite a bit. I don't know that this would be the case here, but that's one of the reasons for that. Alderman, thank you.
Commissioner Slattery?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, to, I think to tag on to Commissioner Martin's comments, I have some concerns that garages are storage space on property rather than car garages and we know that to be true in a lot of cases. But my concern is amplified by what I can see here, and this is not a real detailed plan, but some of these driveways look very short. And I just question, in these big, in this big curving horseshoe section and with these units being duplexes and very densely built on the property, that the road is going to be overwhelmed with cars. I have a concern with the waiver for those reasons.
Okay. Commissioner, or I'm sorry, Chairman, not Chairman, Director.
Yeah. I got a promotion.
Yeah. No, you did.
With the depth, so whenever we have a parking space and we're counting that as a parking space in these types of situations, this is going to require a site plan, a detailed site plan later. And part of what we'll do is make sure on the site plan that's initially, that eventually is approved, that there's at least 20-foot from the front of the garage to the back of the sidewalk. Because if you just allow 18-foot, you know, what's going to happen is, somebody's going to have a bigger vehicle and it's going to be parked over the sidewalk. And especially in a community like this, we definitely don't want to impede the sidewalk pathway with vehicles. So, we'll, you know, whatever, whatever, if it's two spaces outside or one space outside, we'll make sure that there's ample room, you know, for that in that process.
So, do we make that a requirement of the waiver? How do we ensure, if we offer the waiver today, before we see the final design plan, how do we ensure that that will be the case?
Yeah. You wouldn't need to put a rider on that because that's just baked into our zoning ordinance requirements. So, when they come back to you to do a detailed site plan and get that approved, that's all going to have to be on there.
Okay. Thank you.
Even if it means, oh, we thought we could fit that in there conceptually, but now we actually can't, then you'd have to look at maybe reducing the number of units in some of the areas just to make that work.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. You're welcome.
Commissioner Hasty?
I guess I'd ask questions to the staff. Is nobody here representing the development?
Is there someone here? Yes, there are. Or can they come up?
Well, a few questions.
We can bring them right up.
Are they private streets?
Yes. These are private streets.
Come on up.
That would be constructed within the development. And actually, I think that main road that goes through there, I think that's actually a private street too, isn't it?
It is. It is private.
Music Village Boulevard?
Yeah. Music City Boulevard is a private street.
Yeah.
Go ahead and introduce yourselves.
Okay.
Mark Boyd with Kinley Horn.
Kevin Glade, Architect with TAI.
Okay. Go ahead Charles.
These are rental units or are they for sale units?
Rentals. Rental units.
Rental. The first time we saw this and every time until now, one of the huge selling points for this development was assisted living. And now, it's just been wiped out, right?
Well, yeah, yes. These, we've taken that high-density assisted living out because we have an arrangement with the unit, the building down the street run by Vitality. So, they have a lot of assisted living. And so, this independent living will be, but we have services all the way up to, you know, assisted living available to the residents.
Yeah. I can see that your amenity package seems to cater to what you define as senior living But a 55 and older development, when Mr. Free mentioned it, that's the first time I've heard that mentioned.
Yeah.
As being a 55-plus development. What you have here, in my opinion, you've called it a senior living, you've called it even in your documents, an assisted independent living, and you also called it independent living. So, but in my opinion, reality, what you have is independent living.
With assistance.
Right?
Yeah. Part of the program, the way we run the units is you'll, you can add services.
When you speak a little louder, I have a hard time hearing you.
We can add on, in other words, you can have assistance for, we have laundry services and then medication, administration. So, there, you can add on services to independent living. So, yes, it's independent, but we look at the average age of these units as like 80 years old. So, the people will be, it's 55-plus, but it goes all the way up to. But, so that, what I'm saying is the services that we add on, that's where it becomes assisted living. But it's not labeled assisted living. That...
That's not a state governed assisted living, correct?
No. It's an independent living with assistance services available.
Well, yeah, I think you've done a good job on saving the twitty development, but what you have here is nothing more than a high-density independent living facility, in my opinion. And if you can't rent it to 55-plus and it's vacant and somebody 20 wants to rent it, I guarantee you, the investors are going to rent it. So, what you have is an independent living facility, in my opinion. And I think it should be designed with parking and everything else accordingly. You know, just like any other apartment complex in town, independent living with some extra amenities that cater to senior living. And that's great, but it's an independent living facility, in my opinion.
Maybe clarify that. Or go ahead Timothy.
Yeah, I would just point out, the definition in our zoning ordinance for independent living is that it's 55 or older. That is baked into the, that particular use category, is it's 55 or older.
And this, yeah. And this particular, and I understand all the nuance with kind of the naming and everything, but what this is and the way it's functioning, we're treating it from a zoning perspective as independent living. So, there's nothing wrong with that necessarily. It's just, but that's, you know, that's what it is. So, it's an independent living with various à la carte services.
That's correct.
And that's basically, you know, what it is, but it still meets our definition of independent living, but...
Right. Yeah, it's always been independent living, but like we said, there are services available. We have the community center, which has all the amenities for, you know, seniors in that building, so.
Commissioner Silkwood, you have questions?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes. Just to echo what Commissioner Hasty said a moment ago about, I appreciate what you all have done, saving Twitty City and all of that. I think it's going to look really good and I appreciate the effort there. Again, though, I do have concerns about the parking situation, just because folks are 55-plus does not necessarily mean they only have one car. Additionally, even if they only have one car, it's become quite the trend to have a golf cart to get back and forth to the pickleball court and the pool and whatnot. So, you know, saying, hey, we're going to use part of the parking in the garage as part of the required parking is not something that I can be okay with. But enough said about that. I do have a follow-up question. I do understand that the Music City Boulevard is a private road. However, at a previous meeting, when you all came before us, you assured us that that would remain open to the public for ease of use out of the backside of First Baptist and the YMCA. Is that going to remain so?
Yes. That remain, it'll remain open as a public, but as you said, it is defined as a private road.
A private road, right. I think, and that's the status. Now, I just wanted to make sure that's how it would remain.
Right. No, we haven't changed that designation at all.
Okay. Fantastic. And then additionally, are you planning to repair the Hello Darlin' Wall where the tornado came and knocked some of the brick out right there?
Right. One of the issues, when we moved the community center a little more towards Music City Boulevard and Main Street, the wall now, and you can see it, you can't really read in there, but yes, the Hello Darlin' Wall will remain for a good part of it and actually, when it turns the corner, it'll remain too.
Are you...
So, that was all part of our planning.
Are you planning to tear down any portion of the Hello Darlin' Wall?
Not the Hello Darlin' portion. I think there's a portion of the, that says Music City that runs down Music Village Boulevard that will be removed just because of the way the layout has come out. But the portion along Main Street is, will remain.
Will remain.
And the section that's been damaged will be repaired.
Will be repaired.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. I just want to reiterate that I would not support the waiver for the parking. Thank you.
Commissioner Kerr?
Yes. Thank you. A couple of questions on the assisted living versus independent living. Been in healthcare many years, so I know a little bit about this space. There is a huge difference between independent living and assisted living.
I agree.
When it comes to, if you're offering, you mentioned medication, well, that's a state licenser concern. Not a concern, but you've got to get appropriate approvals to do that. So, I mean, I'm not a big fan of just juggling the two terms around because there's a huge difference in terms of assisted versus independent. And also, from an assisted living perspective, if you rotate back to that at some point or you're planning today to build out some of those as assisted living, there's requirements around where patients can be and access to doors and public access to the buildings. So, I would just ask that you make sure you research all that before you think about an assisted living, because there is a huge difference in terms of the way the state licenser board looks at those two.
Oh, and I agree. And we had, when we took that one building out, that was a pure assisted living, all the services and licensers. And then, this independent, what we're saying is there's, you know, like a cafeteria services of other things available. And yes, licensing is very important to our organization. We have a lot of experience.
So, you would offer med services, medication services to the independent living side?
Yeah, maybe. I mean, we can, you know...
I mean, that's a big deal. Because a lot of it's reimbursed by Medicare and all that.
That's not, you know, but there are services available, but not purely, not assisted living. In other words, it's not, we're not putting assisted living patients into this facility, the independent.
You could. I mean, you could put somebody.
Yeah.
And that's the slippery slope between independent and assisted.
Well, I agree.
So, and maybe this is a staff question. Can they rotate back, pivot back to an assisted living if they choose to do that at some point?
I think at this point, with the final development plan, that's taken out, you know, which is fine. But if they wanted to go back to that, Timothy, I think they'd have to come back and add that use.
Well, the use is still, as they presented it, the use is still in there. They've just removed the facility.
Right. You'd have to, you'd have to come back and do a revised FDP.
Well, if they were going to present, yes, if they're going to do a large centralized assisted living facility.
Right.
Yes, so we'd have to come back and add that into the plan. However, the use, just the bare use, still is part of, is still a part of the listed that will be allowed.
I see what you're saying.
I mean, if that's in fact the case, why not pull that use out of the current plan and so you don't have a use that you don't have in the plan? You know what I mean? I mean, I just think that, I mean, I personally want clarity on that because I know what that can do to a particular community and a lot of restrictions around that. So, I would, just think about it, and this is a staff, more of a staff question. Can we consider revising the use, appropriate uses to take out assisted living at this stage?
You could, certainly. It just means down the road, if they decided to, at some point, flip back, if they decided, hey, we've looked at this and, you know, we think that there's a market for the assisted living component after all, it's just, it's just, you know, they'd have to come back and add that, get that use added to it. So, it reduces their flexibility.
Okay. I mean, we'd want them to come back regardless, if they wanted to add assisted living units, right?
In a different type of facility. But if they were converting it from the existing development to that use, which I don't think is their intention to do so.
No, no. This is an independent living cottage unit. And like you said, the definition of zoning says independent means 55-plus, but there's no assisted living per se units on it. So, we're, right now, this is an independent living facility with services for independent living, you know, and...
I would, I would think, yeah. I would think that if this was approved with the way this layout is and then you wanted to convert that existing same layout to some type of assisted living, then that would change. Even though the use is actually okay in this particular makeup, it hasn't been approved that way per the final development plan. And so, I would look at that, as a director, I would look at that as you'd have to come back and do an amendment of the FDP to clarify that, because it could mean something different in the infrastructure.
Oh, absolutely.
I mean, I would think it would be less parking requirement for assisted living than independent living, but there could be other infrastructure-related things we might look at a little bit differently. So, if that were to occur in the future, Commissioner, then we would require it to come back for an amendment of the final development plan.
Right. And that could be some structural changes too, because you've got to have limited access into the buildings. It's just a totally different ballgame. So, I'll just leave it at that. I just wanted to bring that up.
Right. And just to clarify, yes, at one point, if we said, you know, we're going to have more assisted living, but we, you know, our market studies show there's enough assisted living in Hendersonville area that that's not required, but this housing type, the independent living with, you know, services available for catering to, you know, the older population, yes, that's... So, at any point, if we said, well, we want to put an assisted living on there, you know, we would come back with a new plan, with a new building that fits it, but...
Yeah. And I hear you, but the safety switch for me is the staff, you know, that would require that. Because when we, when it leaves this commission tonight, we've got that use on there. The only safety switch we got is through planning. It would not move forward with assisted living unit unless it comes before this commission first. And that, I'm okay with that. I just wanted to clarify that.
No, thank you for clarifying it.
Are you comfortable with, once this, if this moves forward tonight with the recommendation... Are, are you comfortable with, um, once this, if this, uh, uh, moves forward tonight with the recommendation to BOMA and then is approved by BOMA, are you okay if we put a note on there to that effect? Just so it's clear in the future, whoever are in our positions will know, oh, if this change occurs, then it's gonna require, um, a, uh, an amended final development plan?
Yeah, by all means.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll, the staff will just do that, and we do that. Okay.
Commissioners, any other questions? Go ahead, Commissioner Hardwick.
Two, two, two quick questions. So we are approving this as a fifty-five plus. So if I'm forty-five, I'm not eligible to live there, correct?
Uh, I will let.
Is that what they're, is that, that's what you're saying, correct?
A certain number is allowed. There's a percentage, different jurisdictions have a, a certain percentage under fifty-five can live there. But it's, it's a fifty-five plus community. But you're right, if, if forty-five, I, I can't, I don't know the exact, but I know that there, it's not totally restricted, because that would be.
Well, so, I guess I've always understood this was going to be an assisted, independent living for seniors. So now the assisted is gone. You're saying there's not a market for that here, I understand. So it's now independent, but I just wanna make sure you're saying this is independent for seniors? And is that, is it ten percent? Is it twenty-five percent? I mean, I'm not asking, I'm not trying to put that number on you. I'm trying for you to tell me what it is I'm voting for. Cause the way I'm hearing it right now, it could be all twenty-year-olds that wanna live there, if that's what shows up, and there's no, there's no restriction on it. It could go that direction.
No, it's a fi- it's a fifty-five plus, but I know law says that there is some percentage, and I can't.
Then you, please give that to me so I can understand what I'm voting for.
Timothy is wanting to tell you.
Yeah, I, I'll just read the definition.
Okay.
Uh, independent living facility, a residential complex containing dwellings where the occupancy is limited, is limited to persons who are fifty-five years of age or older, or if two persons occupy a unit, at least one shall be fifty-five years or older. Such facilities may include common areas for meals and socializing, but, but, um, offering minimal convenient services. So that indicates that at least one person, at least one of the occupants has to be fifty-five or older.
Okay. I, I'm good. Then, the last piece on here was, it did not talk about the exterior siding of the buildings. What are you envisioning? I know that's gonna come back in the future, but just want, want you to tell me what it is you're thinking.
It, it's, um, you know, majority brick, but then there'd be some siding, you know, mix of siding. And so, you, you know, majority of it's gonna be, like you see here, it's not gonna be, you know, stuck or something. We're talking about, you know, brick and, and siding and accents, you know.
Okay. That's all.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Kerr, you're on the queue.
Just to follow up, uh, Timothy, on your definition, so if, if you had, and I've got two questions. If you had somebody that was fifty-five, they could have as many people as they wanted, under fifty-five, living there?
Uh, I, I believe so, yes.
Okay. That's a concern. Secondly, does the person that's fifty-five, if they are a legal owner of that property, do they have to actually reside there? In order for?
Yes, yes, at lea- at least one of the occupants would have to be fifty-five or older.
And own and live there?
And live there, right.
But these are rentals.
Oh, rental, my bad, okay. Yeah, that's right. So, right, so they'd have to physically live in the property. Okay.
And, and just one point to clarify on, on that, if I can. The, the units themselves are small, um, under a thousand square feet, I think each, each unit is that, so there's only, I think, two bedrooms in each unit. So there's not gonna be multiple bedrooms that are housing multiple people like that. The attempt for, the attempt for this is.
Now, have, have you spent a lot of time in Sumner County?
No.
Okay, I have. And, and I'm telling you, you could have the one or two bedroom apartments and have ten people in that unit. That sounds outrageous, but it happens. Um, so, and that's why I asked the question on the number of, do we have any kind of requirement or limit on the number of people that can live in a rental unit?
Yes, uh, there are limits by, um, we have some limits, and then state law defines some things in a family. It's, it's somewhat loose. I think it's five unrelated, the five, five unrelated people, but, uh, that could be, could be there. But if they're related, there is not a, there's not a limit, uh, to what that, what that would be. And I, I think a lot of these different things that are driving the questions, uh, I think they're dealing with your request for the waiver of the parking. Cause that's, that's making this, look at this at a deeper level, because there, you know, the, the planning commission is trying to diligently determine in considering the waiver, all of these different potential unknowns, uh, you know. Is that something still that you're, uh, wanting to request that, or do you have?
And if I can address some of the concerns about, about the parking. So this is intended to be in, independent living. Um, and like Kevin said, most of the residents that are, that are living in these communities are eighty years old. So the typical resident is not fifty-five and active adult, as it's called. These are older citizens that are looking to downsize, that are, that are oftentimes single, single. Uh, you know, they've, they've lost a partner and they're moving into these facilities for community and, and additional care, um, and the amenities that are being offered. So I think that's, that's a point to consider. Obviously, we can't regulate that necessarily. I, I understand where the concerns are coming from, from that end, but I do think that's a point to consider. There are studies that are, that are done from a parking standpoint that often independent living only requires zero-point-two to zero-point-four parking spaces per unit. So that's much less than the requirement of two parking spaces per unit. So I think that's also a point to consider, and why we are trying to count the garage as part of that. The garage for, for seniors is being used for their cars so that they can park their, their, out of the rain, they're out of the cold, they can park their cars, get into their homes. That's kind of the intent and why we wanted to use that garage space. Often, these seniors are not bringing a lot of stuff that's stored in garages, like you often see, like my garage at home, it's full of stuff. That's different at a independent living, senior living facility. The other thing I, I do want to point out that adding parking to the plan, which has not been shown since the P D, with the PDP either, but if we add parking spaces to the plan, that will add like another acre approximately of impervious area, so additional stormwater management is required. A lot more infrastructure, just, it really will reduce the character and quality of the development to add that much additional pavement and parking. So that's part of the reason why we are requesting this waiver. I hope that's helpful.
It is. Commissioner Slattery, you were in the queue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So to dig a little deeper down this rabbit hole on the age restrictions of, of the occupants. I remember us having this conversation about another age-restricted community. And University of Google just taught me that the Federal HOPA Housing for Older Persons Act, and I remember us talking about this, requires in fifty-five-plus communities, at least eighty percent of the occupied units must have at least one, um, occupant that is fifty-five years or older. Only eighty percent, which means of these one hundred and ten units, twenty-two of them could easily have someone in their twenties, thirties, forties. And I'm personally tired of fifty-five being clumped in with the older definition. We gotta work on that one. But, but back to, you know, back to the parking concern. Our community is highly desirable. Tennessee is highly desirable. Outcomes of elections tonight could make us even more desirable, but as people move to this area, a thousand-square-foot dwelling seems more than adequate, depending on where they're coming from. And we could very easily see this be eighty-eight units of fifty-five plus, and at fifty-five plus, there are three vehicles in my garage right now, plus a Kubota, so four. So I, I think the parking continues to be a real, um, point of concern for me. A single garage, and I hear what you're saying, at eighty, you might not have as much in your garage, but I consider these step-down from single-family home, everybody's moved out finally, and we're downsizing. Downsizing does not happen in one step. Downsize happens with a garage that is full to the beams as you continue to try to downsize. So I, I just, um, I, I cannot support the waiver for the parking, um, waiver, I can't support the request for the parking waiver for all of those reasons.
No, I understand and I appreciate that. And like Mark was saying, these units range from one-bedroom, eight-hundred square feet all the way up to thirteen-hundred, where we do have a parking space in the larger units for a golf cart. But the, the, the gist of this development is dignity for elderly people that, that find themselves, you know, empty nesters, or, you know, spouse may have passed away. And this, the services we're providing, like one thing you, you see here is that the street is really for the cars only, but we have an entire walking path. So the idea is, this is a walking community. And the advantage is you can get out and walk the entire thing, you can see people, and rarely do you cross a road. And then we have some of the central spaces, which we look as nice gathering spaces. And all of the services that we're providing are for, you know, they're geared towards the elderly that, you know, need to have an improved life. And so that, that's really been this whole thing. So, yeah, part of it is we understand the park requirement, but that would also start, not only impervious surfaces, but start adding another layer of congestion and, and so, yeah, it's, we've really worked hard to create this park, because Tennessee is a very desirable. Hendersonville is an extremely desirable. And, you know, market studies show that this will be, you know, occupied pretty quickly.
Commissioner Martin, you're in the queue.
I'm an architect too, so I appreciate what you've said and the civil engineer, um, on how things should work. Um, in a perfect world, that's the way it would wor- it would work, um, but that's not the world we live in. The reason I asked Director Free to articulate why we don't allow a garage space to count is because it's something we have in our zoning ordinance, because it's been an issue all over town. So that's why we have it. Um, it's not, I'm just, I'm just letting you know, it's, it's, it's our position.
Yeah, I fully understand the reality of, cause like you said, Ms. Slattery, I mean, I, I have a two-car garage, which is now a cat haven. We had somebody come in, the kittens were born in there. Now this kitten brought this kitten, and so now our cars are outside. And, you know, once you have an empty space, yeah, it's suddenly everything, and, um, we, we can't control it. We can, we can try to monitor it and make sure that's the way, but you're right. I mean, human beings, I've been an architect for a long time, and I could design the most beautiful thing, and that's why we always say, take a picture before people move in. You move in and it's like, where did all this stuff come from? Right? It's like, you could, you could say, this is the way this functions, and they go, I don't, I don't want that. Well, that's code. That has to be in there for that reason. So we, I really appreciate that, having lived in neighborhoods and other areas where next thing you know, it's like you're in the middle of a city.
Commissioner Evans, you have a question?
A couple of observations, and my, my thunder has been stolen by Commissioner Slattery. But I'm, I'm, uh, obviously over fifty-five, and I still have eight vehicles, and I've got lots and lots of stuff that would have to fill a garage. Getting beyond that, uh, I'm seeing some walking trails, I'm seeing some pickleball courts, but what I see otherwise is a high-density duplex development. And I just can't, I just can't vote for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Hasty, one more?
One more time. I agree with Mr. Evans a hundred percent. Not only will I not vote for the variance, but I won't vote for the development, because it has totally changed when, from when the concept was delivered, and we had all these public hearings, and all these people were addressing that development. And what we're seeing now is nothing like what was originally presented, and all the public hearings were held. So I'm voting against the variance and voting against the project.
Okay. Any other commissioners? Otherwise, I'll entertain motions, and just before we take motions, we could also have a motion for the waiver only. We gotta have a motion for the final development plan. We can combine them. So I will hear your leisure, do what you want.
Well, I just wanna ask one quick question.
Go right ahead.
Before we make the motions. To, we are voting for this as a seniors, not assisted, independent, seniors' independent living is what we're voting on, and that's what the development will be per the, from rules and regulations that go with that.
Yeah, from my understanding, it's independent living, and the definition of independent living means fifty-five plus.
So it's senior independent living is what, is what I'm voting on?
You're in, you're voting for independent living, and our definition of it says that that's fifty-five plus.
Okay, got it.
Can I, can I add one comment, please?
Yes, go right ahead.
I just wanna clarify, the, the change in the development plan, which we acknowledge is different from what you have seen previously. It did remove the assisted living, but the independent living cottages are largely the same as they were before. The density has increased from ninety-six to one-hundred-and-ten, so an addition of fourteen units, and the removal of eighty assisted living units. So I think you could argue this is actually less dense than it was before. And I, I do wanna make that point, that we're, we're not largely changing this plan, um, with a, trying to throw a big curveball in here. We're trying to create a, a, a great independent living community and development.
Right, just to, you know, follow up on that. What we did was remove the eighty-unit assisted living up on the street. And then we also removed, next to it, you see, that was a four-story office complex. So both of those were removed, and the density decreased to, basically, ten units were put in that, that space. And, um, the landscaping increased up in that front end too. So that, it has become less dense, but there were more units. But most of the units added were seven-hundred to, you know, a thousand square feet.
More independent living units, less units overall, and less commercial development up front and along Main Street.
Commissioner Hardwick, I see you have a question?
I, I know we wanna vote, and I wanna vote as well. The fact that you just said you removed the office buildings, and I, if I recall from our conversation, there was gonna be a lot that TBN was doing with that, and you were gonna be bringing a lot of engineers and programming. What, with, with all that being removed, I'm assuming none of that is coming at this point. What is the long-term plan for the theater?
Well, the theater will remain as it is with, it, it's a TV studio, and, you know, TBN has active, you know, programming going on. But we also look at it as, you know, it's a facility too for residents and the community, which is one of the parts that, why we moved the community center up towards the thing, because we look at that as like, you know, a gesture towards the community, because we, there's enough spaces in there where you can have programs come in and, and outside people come into that facility. And, um, certainly with the Twitty Mansion remained, and what we've done is we've made sure that the area in front of it is open, so you can have open-air events with that as a background. So we still have the one commercial development up in the upper corner, the Cordell and Main Street, which would have professional offices and, you know, we look at maybe some medical offices and, I mean, that's to be determined, but we know that's a, at least a four-story development that's still remaining on the property.
So there's no plan in a year, or two, or three to close the theater? It's, it's, we're, we're looking at a long-term commitment, that it's, it's gonna continue to be here, be a production?
That theater will be there, and it'll be active and used for lots of programming, TBN and other.
Okay, so I'll just do a real quick summary, from what I understand, to make sure that we all know what we're voting on, okay? It has changed. It took out the assisted living. The density has decreased. You all are asking for a waiver on parking. Now, again, you know the waiver on parking is causing a lot of, uh, concern amongst this committee, all right? You've heard a lot of the people telling you that they're going to have trouble voting for this for a, a number of things. Okay, so it's time for you guys to do a little soul-searching too, all right? But at the same time, I think everybody on this side understands it's independent living, okay? Which means in our definition, it's a fifty-five-plus community. Which means in our definition, it's a fifty-five plus community. There are people that can live there at less than fifty-five, okay? But not a whole lot. And it is a lower density than we originally saw. So there's some checkboxes on some of this on our side of the table. So with that, I'll entertain a motion for any more comments. You all are in control, you can do a waiver motion, you can do a final development plan motion, you could do them combined. You can do what you want.
You could do, you could do a final, you could do, approve the final development plan without the request of variance. If you wanted to, or you could do it with it, uh, as well, so either, either way.
All right, I'm, I'm for eating horse one bite at a time.
Yeah, there we go. Hold on one second, Wendy. You know, um, I, I said to you guys, it's time for you to do soul searching too. So if you see the tone up here is not going your way, you're welcome to ask for a deferral. I believe most of the people on this side of the table will grant it. And if it gives you time to go back and make a plan that's a little better, uh, you know, for both parties, it's, it's available to you.
I think we would take that deferral request. Unfortunately, Frank and Media with the ownership group was unable to be here. And I, I, we do apologize that he had some health issues that he's dealing with and so was unable to fly in today. Uh, I, I wish he was here to help. I know he was a big part of the original discussions that y'all had. So I, I think taking a deferral at this step, given the way this conversation has gone, I'm a little caught off guard by, by this, but understand all the concerns that we're hearing. Um, we, we definitely take the time to, to regroup and come back in front of you.
I will make a motion for. Right, so I'm going to confirm, so it's in the public view that you are requesting the deferral?
Correct.
Okay, now I will make a motion that we will grant you a deferral. And, and how much time would you like for this deferral to be able to do this?
I think thirty days.
Okay, a thirty day deferral is the motion that I'm going to make. Do I have a second? Okay, I have a second. Do we need to do a electronic vote, I would suspect? And again, this is an electronic vote, supporting the motion for a thirty day deferral.
Motion to grant thirty day deferral request by applicant approved with nine yeses.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Moving to the next one, we have a site plan, it's Football. Site plan amendment, field lighting, owner Football Five Investment Group, location two forty Innovation Way parcel, one sixty M A zero zero five point oh two. And again, this is Timothy.
Thank you. Uh, so Football Five is proposing to add, uh, field lights to their, to their soccer field. Uh, the zoning ordinance limits light poles to twenty-two feet with thirty feet height allowed upon approval of the planning commission. Those lighting standards are geared towards parking lots generally, but that, that is the requirement. Football Five is requesting seventy foot tall poles, which would be similar to the field light pole heights in our, in our park system. Parking lots in particular have a maximum cap of ten foot candles and, uh, in parking lots and thirty foot candles under field canopy. So that kind of gives you a, this, this proposal for the seventy foot poles has a foot candle rating of forty-five. So that kind of gives you a, a reference point to kind of judge what the lighting levels are for a field compared to a typical parking lot in our, in our community. Our standards don't particularly address field lighting, um, as, as far as lighting levels. The, uh, the proposed plan shows foot candles in the range of forty-five foot candles. I would point out, just remind you that the BOMA approval of the CDP included the requirement that lights, that any lights be turned off by ten P M.
Thank you very much. Uh, any questions for Timothy from up here? Okay, Commissioner Slattery?
Timothy, thank you, Mr. Chair. Timothy, are there any light poles taller than the twenty-two foot current requirement around these businesses or in the area of Football Five, since that is a light industrial, um, commercial area?
I don't recall any that took advantage of the thirty foot option. There, there may be some, but I, I don't recall any in particular.
But nothing beyond the thirty foot, nothing with a waiver?
No.
Okay, thank you.
And I would, uh, it may be helpful to kind of go over the history of the, of the zoning of this area. So, um, some time ago, th- this particular parcel, uh, was industrial along with all those other large parcels on Innovation Way. They got rezoned to general commercial P D. And then Grace Place next door, so along the New Shackle corridor, all that is, is G C commercial, about three hundred feet deep, including the, including the lots across the, kind of the front of where Innovation Way tees in, all that's commercial. And then Grace Place got their G C lot rezoned to M F R P D. So M F R P D is, that's the only residential, you know, other than on the opposite side of New Shackle in this whole area.
Commissioner Kerr, I saw you second.
Right, uh, just maybe a question for Timothy. Seventy seems to be pretty high to me. But, uh, what I don't know, um, is do we have any other exceptions at athletic fields where seventy foot pole is what we've got?
I'm not aware of any.
What is the average at, say, Drake's Creek or the rugby field? I mean, what, what are we talking about?
So in our parks department, they have the ability to go up to whatever they need. So the, so I did ask parks about this and they said their lights in general range from seventy-five to eighty foot. But, but that's for parks, I'm not aware of any exceptions for, for private property or private fields.
So if, if we were to grant this exception, would that put us in a difficult situation if another athletic organization came in and wanted the same? Say more in a closer to residential area? I just worry about, about that too.
I mean, e- each, each of these can be judged on their own merits. So I don't, I don't think that would necessarily, uh, uh, sort of pigeonhole you into a particular, uh, decision if, if some other, um, situation came along.
Okay, last question. Why seventy feet? Why not fifty, why not forty?
I think the applicant is better prepared to answer that.
Hello, I'm Chuck Messer with Football Five, I'm sure you are familiar with me, we've been back, good to see everybody again. So the reason that we have adjusted to seventy is we turned this over to GeoSport, which is our lighting contractor, lighting engineer. We told them that we had a thirty foot requirement to meet and they did a photo luminescent on that thirty foot design. The problem, as you can see, is it's just not a safe playing environment for players at thirty feet. We have four foot candles, which is less than half of a dimly lit parking lot in the goal box where people are going to be taking balls. We have a hundred and fifty-four foot candles at the midline, that's like staring directly into the sun. So I can't provide a safe playing environment for the people who are going to be on this field. At seventy, that's what the industry standard is for a full size eleven V eleven, uh, soccer field. And it gives us a much, excuse me, a much more, um, even, um, cast over the entire field. We can use a lesser load on the lights as far as the power of the light. And we can control the direction, casting it more down, bringing in shields, things that we simply can't do at thirty feet that help us to control that one candle max at property line of Grace Place, which is residential. And we do maintain that by bringing in shields on the lights. I think our max on that property line, I can't see it from here, but it's like point four, which is less than half of what the requirement is for residential. So we took all of those things that we've learned here in these meetings and, and how particular we are with Grace Place and ensuring we don't spill onto their property when we took this seventy foot into account. And simply, we've, we've went through various variations of this and I just keep getting told seventy is what works for this size of a field. Even at the thirty, we would, had originally planned, thank you, whoever's on the clicker, you're on it. We had originally planned four poles and, and the thirty requires us to bring in an additional pole, making us up to six. And it just does not cover the field adequately. Yet we still maintain at seventy the same spillage that we have at thirty on the property line at Grace Place. So, um, we've also conversed, we have a little bit more spillage on the property line to Love it and to the Coach Boulder behind us, but both of them are not opposed to more lighting on their property. So, um, and again, we have the ten o'clock shut off every night. So I feel this won't really play too much into that.
Oh, that's helpful, thank you.
Of course.
Commissioner Silkwood, do you have questions?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Chairman, thank you for being here tonight. I actually have quite a bit of experience with sports lighting. And I can tell you all in the commission for sure that seventy foot poles are very standard. In fact, you pretty much can't light a field of this size safely without a large pole. Additionally, they have very modern directional lighting nowadays. I think we're all sort of thinking, maybe even five years ago, what was available. It's improved a lot even since then. I drove around today to double check, but, uh, there is very tall lighting. It may not be quite seventy feet, but I'd guess it's at least fifty or sixty at the La Crosse fields, which directly abut houses on Cherokee Road. Additionally, at Drake's Creek at the soccer field, there are houses that run along Chippendale and Southburn, right on the other side of the tracks. Obviously, the rugby field has Durham Farms right there, the lighting is very directional. Additionally, they've obviously agreed to cut off the lighting by ten P M. So I think we allowed this use, we allowed this, you know, business to move forward. I think we need to allow them to, to be as productive and successful as possible. And one other small comment, um, maybe you all don't, aren't aware, but our fields in the parks department are, we could use probably ten more fields, to be honest. So hopefully this, um, place will alleviate some of that need. So I fully support it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Martin?
I just had some, some questions because on a photometric, you get, um, light all over the site plan. I didn't see that in the packet, did you guys get that done?
I'm sorry, all over the site plan? I was told to have it on the.
Is there one with the property line on there?
Yeah, we, we, they did turn those in, showing, showing the foot candle readings at the limits of the lot.
Just on the perimeter?
Correct, for the, for the, yes, that's correct.
Okay, the one concern I've got, and the reason I think we talked, uh, you could have twenty-two foot and then I think, if I remember correctly, we let them have it up to thirty feet. Um, and one of the driving considerations was glare into Grace Place. And so now the seventy, I didn't see like a cross section that would show, because I think this is sunken down a little bit, right?
Yes, it's about eighteen foot down from entry point and the grade of where Grace Place is. Um, we also have a very dense tree line there. And again, the photo luminescent show, we're at point four at the property line. And Grace Place has another ten foot setback plus our ten foot setback. So there's distance between us and anything on their, on their lot as well.
All right, so what elevation is Grace Place compared to the field?
They are higher elevation than us, for sure.
Ten feet?
Roughly twenty feet from where our field sits to their sidewalk.
Right, that sounds about right. So the thirty foot light pole was kind of doable, the seventy. Did you show this to Grace Place and, and they were confident that you weren't going to get the glare in their unit?
With the, with the seventy foot lights, we're, we're able to bring shields in and, and we also agreed to L E D lights as well. So we're restricted in the type of light that we can use. The shields will, and are there for taking the glare away from the light.
Yeah, the cutoffs?
Right.
Yeah. Is that demonstrated in the packet? Is there something I was missing that had, uh, what's called a cross section? All I saw was product data.
You're, uh, you're talking about a profile of the, of the, of the, uh, topography?
Yes.
A cross section of the topography, no, that was not submitted.
All right, I, I would have liked to have seen that. At least you could show that to Grace Place and kind of make it feel comfortable. All righty.
Grace Place has been pretty fantastic to us. So we've, we've had co-grading, co-development plan package since day one with them and Love it and Industrial down below. So we've had nothing but support and we took them very heavily into consideration when we did the design. I just simply cannot offer a safe playing environment for players at thirty feet. It just, I can't do it. Four candles and, and a goal box is just dangerous. And staring, and, and not just that, but hot spots on the field going from shadows and dimly lit. That's just, it's, there are studies that show that there is an increased soft tissue damage to, to players that have poorly lit fields. I can't offer that to these people. I, I don't want to offer that to these people, let me rephrase that. Um, and that's why we engage GeoSport and they, they are very well-known, very reputable. They do Vanderbilt, University of Florida, all kinds of colleges, they know what they're talking about. And this is what they, they said, look, this is the way you get adequate lighting on your field, seventy is the standard. And that's where we've landed here today, is to try to make that happen.
Commissioner Slattery, you have questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you for being here, we do all recognize you. You never thought you'd travel to Hendersonville this often, did you? Just an observation, I think you've worked very, very hard to make this work and to meet all of the, the nuanced requests that have been made of you by the city. So thank you for working so diligently to, to be a good neighbor in Hendersonville. And I respect the concern about Grace Place. I also respect, as someone pointed out to me, Grace Place made the decision to move into commercial area. And I think, um, a lot of consideration is being given to Grace Place to make this as least impactful as possible. And I don't chase soccer balls, but I wouldn't want to do it in bright light and then dark corners. So for those reasons, I, I, I find no problem with your request and, and would support it.
Thank you.
Any other commissioners have questions, comments? I'll entertain a motion.
Okay, so.
Okay, I have Commissioner Hardwick, I see you're lit up, real quick.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve and I have a second from Commissioner Silkwood. And we'll do this by electronic vote.
Motion to approve passed with eight yeses, one no.
Thank you all very much, it's great seeing you again.
Okay, next on the agenda, another site plan, Hendersonville Police Department K nine building site plan. Owner, City of Hendersonville, location three Executive Park Drive, parcel one sixty-three C F zero zero five point zero zero. Planning staff, Caitlin, this one's yours.
Thank you, Chairman. The police department located at three Executive Park Drive, uh, south of West Main Street, behind the First Horizon Bank, Arby's, Lynn's Patio and Hendersonville Health Mart. They are located in the dockside neighborhood along with the properties to the west and the south with general commercial being north and to the east. The applicant is proposing to build a thirty by thirty K nine utility building at the main police headquarters. The location of the building will be to the west of the main building. The location of the building will be to the west of the main building in the existing gravel impound parking lot. There is an existing chain link fence surrounding the impound lot that will be expanded and relocated. The fenced area will increase from about sixteen thousand square feet to twenty thousand square feet, with a new internal chain link fence being, uh, added to enclose the building and the K nine training area. The newly closed, enclosed area will be just over three thousand square feet. The new structure will be constructed of metal siding, which is to be donated by eighty-four lumber. The applicant is requesting a waiver from the building material requirements. Um, with the, they are mitigating the visual impact of the building with, and proposing to install an opaque windscreen along the existing chain link fence and to plant Nelly R. Stephen Hollies along the outer perimeter to the north and to the west perimeters. Uh, the funds for the Hollies are going to be from our Tree Bank Fund. Also, uh, with our newly approved zoning ordinance, the properties within Dockside Neighborhood Zoning District are required to have a minimum of thirty percent primary building materials from either brick, stone, uh, hardy, or an artificial stone product. The applicant has agreed to all staff comments and the chief of police did include a memo that was provided for you at your place.
Thank you, Caitlin. Uh, police chief, I see you out there. You want to come up and speak?
Not really, but I would.
You did, you didn't go unnoticed.
I was trying to. So we, basically, our police building, we're, we're probably at a hundred and twenty percent capacity. We have been for quite some time. And, but our operations continue to expand. And for many, many years, our, we have outsourced our K nine training. We still continue to do that. But instead of trying to look six months down the road or a year down the road, we're trying to look five and ten years down the road as our program continues to expand. And we know that our local trainer, uh, at some point in the future, probably not real distant, like some of the rest of us, is going to retire. And so we're trying to make sure that we have the facilities in place to continue all of our training, but we're trying to move it in-house. Uh, the problem we run into, and we've looked into this, is some of the other training facilities are out of state. Plus, because of our long working relationship with our trainer that's local, uh, the prices are significantly lower. And we know if we go out of state, we don't feel like the quality of training is there, but also, uh, the cost of the training is exorbitant. So in order to plan for that, we have to have facilities in place to continue that trainer. One of our current employees, uh, who has been with the K nine unit for a number of years, has gone through a lot of the training to get the certifications required to be court-accepted as a K nine trainer. Because obviously, I think you know that with police dogs, there's, there is quite a bit of liability. So we want to make sure those people, anybody that's doing that has the proper training, the proper certifications, and will be accepted by the courts. Um, this opportunity kind of came to us. We've been discussing over a period of time what we're going to do. We did not budget for this, this year, because we didn't think it was going to be, you know, in the, in the plans. Uh, we were approached by eighty-four lumber company. They very graciously offered to donate all of the building materials for the building, uh, but this is what they offered. And so obviously, with them donating that, we're not trying to come back to the city and ask for more money at this point. That's not to say at some point in the future, we might not have to, but we, we hope to complete this facility without asking for additional funds from the city. Um, we've got a vendor that's agreed to donate the heating and air conditioning system for the building. Uh, we're working with an electrician who's going to try to do what he can to donate as much as possible. So we're trying to do this and be as fiscally conservative with funds, especially if it comes back to, I'm coming before the Board of Mayor and Alderman to ask for money, to spend money. Uh, we're, we're trying to be as, as, as conservative as we can with that money. And so, um, if we go with a different type of building material, obviously, that falls outside of what the vendor is willing to donate to us, and then it increases the cost substantially. Uh, this is, we've been looking at what we were going to do for the tow-in lot anyway, because I'll be honest with you, I, I don't really like that idea of just chain link fence being there. Um, our current, if you can see the building, or the roof line in the, the front section there, that is our K nine kennel facility. And we already have that windscreen doll, we have windscreens there to kind of sha, shield the view of that. Um, and, uh, Mr. Lavender actually suggested the, the planning around to further obscure that, and, and I'm all for it. Uh, even if we don't do the building, we want to do something to try to obscure that tow-in lot, because we have a requirement that we maintain a chain of custody on seized vehicles, and that's where they go right now. So that's a fenced-in lot that's locked, there's cameras on it, uh, there's officers in the vicinity twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. So, uh, but this, that's originally, we wanted to put the building outside the chain link fence, farther to the, closer to the front. And just upon looking at it, we felt like it would obscure the building more if we put it inside the fence. So that, that was why we changed.
All right. Any commissioners have questions for either Caitlin or the police chief? Okay, no questions, I'll entertain a motion. We have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second, okay. Electronic vote.
We appreciate it. Thank y'all very much. I appreciate it.
Motion to approve, pass with nine yeses.
Okay, next on the agenda is another site plan. Rockland Storage Yard. Owner, Edwin Ventura. Locations, two eight six Rockland Road, parcel sixteen hundred C zero two seven point zero zero. And again, Caitlin? This one's up to you.
Yes, sir. The location is at two eighty-six Rockland Road. Uh, the applicant is requesting approval for a contractor's storage yard. The site is located north of the entrance at Rockland Recreation Area, east of Free Hill Road, and west of the vacant lot, right next to it. The applicant is proposing to remove the existing vacant house, along with the existing asphalt driveway and the asphalt apron near where their new, uh, entrance is located. The property is owned general commercial and was previously used for residential. The surrounding zoning includes a mix, as seen on the screen, of S R one, general commercial and heavy commercial. Um, the proposed plan indicates the area will be used exclusively for material storage with no structures on the site. The storage yard will be paved with asphalt and fully enclosed by an eight-foot wooden privacy fence along the entire perimeter. A, there is a twenty-foot gravel section located in the rear of the storage area that will be used for strictly, um, like rebar, those type of materials. Uh, to enhance the visual screening, they have, they're going to have buffer landscaping proposed along the front. And also, um, they'll have four employee parking spaces, one of them which will be A D A. The sidewalk is proposed along, to be installed from the eastern property to the existing driveway instant, entrance of the property, which is being closed off. Along the western edge of the roadway, a guardrail is in place to protect the steep, uh, embankment that includes rockout croppings and mature trees. The applicant is requesting a partial waiver from the requirement to extend the sidewalk along the entire property frontage. The waiver request is based on several constraints, um, including the excessive slopes, conflicts with the existing guardrail, and the proximity to the bridge. The applicant has accept, uh, has agreed to all staff comments.
Okay, Commissioner Silkwood, I see you're in the queue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, just a quick question for Caitlin. Caitlin, could you clarify what type of material will be stored there? Specifically, when I'm looking at the, um, the site layout plan on C two point oh, uh, that was, we were directed to look at in the comments regarding what was to be stored. Their note number four says enclosed steel containers for secure storage of equipment and tools. Um, is that going to be like a C container, a freight container?
I'm actually going to let the applicant answer that question.
Good evening. Uh, my name's Daniel Smola. I'm a civil engineer with Harpa Civil, uh, here in middle Tennessee. First and foremost, thank you all for your time this evening. Thank you for planning staff and, and Public Works. You all have been fantastic to work with to get to this point. Um, to answer your question, uh, the, the steel shipping containers, it's like your standard. It's your standard shipping container. Um, they have, uh, a full-size one and then a half-size one that they found to be, uh, most convenient for storage of power tools, um, equipment that they just don't want to leave outside in the weather conditions. They did have a carport there that they intend to remove as part of this process, which further kind of removes the ability to, to keep, uh, certain materials and elements out of the weather. Um, so essentially, that's what it is. It's just more secure storage for, for the tools and equipment that they use for their business. Um, if I could elaborate just a little bit more, just to inform you, I mean, it's, uh, it's a small concrete business. They have less than five employees. Um, it's locally owned and run. Um, their operations include, uh, employees showing up in the morning for loadouts, get, get trucks ready, get materials on trailers. Um, the site is, uh, unoccupied for a majority of the day. Gates are closed, things are secured, and then they return in the evening for, for their work vehicles. Um, evening hours, it's, it's secured, uh, gates are shut and locked, and, and the same thing with the evening. So largely, there's, there's not a lot of happenings occurring on the site or a lot of activity. It's primarily just a meeting space for, for storage materials and, and for their, their employees to meet in the mornings.
Thank you so much. Um, I do see the need for the waiver on the sidewalk. That's obviously a very steep embankment, and there would be no way to build a sidewalk there. Um, however, you know, look, looking at our zoning ordinance, ten four sixteen, I believe it is, um, I, I don't believe freight containers, C containers, it says, "Storage within over-the-road containers and similar structures are prohibited in all zones unless on a temporary basis." So that's why I asked that question, what type of storage, because I don't believe, I mean, and perhaps Director Free could clarify, that that is an approved storage. Um, I don't...
Okay. I understand. Um, I don't know if that's something that could be part of tonight's discussion or not. I know it's, it's, uh, they are removing the carport that they have on site, because they need something to try to keep rebar, welded wire mesh, things like that, out of the elements. They can cover them with, with tarps and what have you, but it becomes, uh, a little bit of a challenge, you know, just logistically and, and movement, movement of materials. I don't know if that might be something that could be considered tonight, or if not, um, we could, um, remove it from the plan and come back at a later time for, for further discussion on that.
Uh, yeah, I was going to ask what other type of storage building or, yeah, you can, um, could, could be presented other than a C container?
Sure, we, I, I've talked with staff, um, about the potential of a lean-to style structure, potentially, uh, just to get, an open-air style structure, just to get them some, some weatherproofing. But, um, in the time that it was identified that what was there wasn't allowed as with regard to the carport, we didn't have time to go and spec out what a lean-to structure would look like. In addition with materials, there'd be, I think, some rock and masonry elements that would go to it, you know? So there has to be a little bit more thought put into, um, a permanent structure to put into weatherproof those things, and they intend to, to likely look at that in the future. Um, it's just not part of, of this plan. So in the meantime, if the containers were to be removed, um, they would simply have to deal with covering those materials on, on an as-needed basis, or, or trying to limit the materials that are being exposed until they can come back and then get, uh, some weatherproofing structure to them.
I know, it's kind of a lesser of two evils thing, right? I mean, I really, I'm not in love with the idea of, you know, having C containers there and then that becoming something that's, you know, accepted throughout the city and, and different zones and whatnot. But at the same time, I really don't like the idea of equipment being covered with tarps.
Yeah.
Um, so perhaps Director Free might have something?
So in that same section, ten point four, uh, point one four, it does, on number four, it does allow, uh, for the planning commission to approve those, that outdoor storage, um, with the site plan. So that is a possibility, yes, they do, they're not allowed, but it can be approved by a planning commission.
Uh, and I, I think, I think it could be done this evening. Um, you know, I think just, um, just the unit itself, that isn't desirable or what we're looking to do. Uh, if something was done with it, uh, that would make it conform to being more something that was a so, you know, a solid structure, uh, with the outside material on it, uh, hardy board or, or something that would be acceptable, uh, then that could be, could be a possibility.
If, if I could add to that, um, the, the owner's been fantastic about wanting to, um, present staff with solutions that, that provide aesthetic component to it. We understand there is a, an aesthetic component to storage yards that, that we try to steer away from. Um, the site as it stands today has a six-foot, um, heavy-duty chain link fence with screening around it. They've agreed to remove the six-foot chain link fence and reinstall eight-foot wooden privacy fence around the entire perimeter. Um, that's a significant cost, not only to remove the fence that's there today, but also to reinstall the privacy fence to help with the visual component. They've also agreed to, um, an additional fifteen-foot landscape buffer on the front of the site to help soften the appearance from the road, as well as the southeast corner of the site where the entrance is. That'll extend about fifty feet into the property. Um, when you combine that with the dense vegetation along the extended right-of-way on the north side of Rockland Road, um, we feel like there's a, a solid visual screen, especially going to an eight-foot privacy fence. So as far as being able to see the structures, we've done a, a lot to try to hide their appearance. But, um, if it can't be considered tonight, if we need to look at it further, whether it's a material being added to the storage container to, um, address those concerns, that's something that, that I'm sure they would be willing to, to look at and satisfy. But I could say we've done a lot to help pre, pre, prevent that from being a concern.
Commissioner Currie, you have questions?
Yeah, just to, to leverage off of, uh, Commissioner Silkwood's question about what materials are to be stored there. Uh, I would be interested in knowing what materials cannot be stored there, and do we have a comprehensive list of, of that, such as anything that's explosive or, and we may have other ordinances that cover that, but what protections do we have that we're not going to have items like that, other than you telling us? Um, maybe staff could educate me on how we would approach that.
Yeah, uh, our fire representative in, in here this evening, uh, but basically, uh, if you get into any hazardous or explosive, you know, type material, then that triggers a whole bunch of stuff that, uh, the fire department, uh, does. So there has to be, uh, there's limits, uh, and limits, uh, of where things like that can be placed, uh, and then how, um, if there was some type of situation with it, or it was flammable, or it caught on fire or something, you know, how that would be addressed and how it would be assessed. Uh, as well as, uh, depending on the site, there's some things that, uh, you might not have enough room to, to physically have on there. Uh, so that is something that our fire department, uh, uh, looks at. And then they, uh, they evaluate properties, uh, throughout the year, I believe, where they, uh, go on-site and check things, and, and sometimes they'll find something, uh, that they weren't aware of, uh, of, of material that's being stored, uh, that, and then, uh, the business has to change that or have it properly, properly stored. That's a good question.
So let me go back. Do we have a list of unapproved items that can be stored there?
No.
We have, we've provided an implicit list. We, we've said what we intend to store there. Um, to provide an exclusionary list, it would be broad, I would, I would assume. So we, we've been implicit in what we intend to do, um, rather than, than exclude. I will say, um, in the pre-application meeting, we did have a chance to have, um, fire marshal representative as part of that. Um, and with that, the only concern that they had was making sure that they had, um, a hundred and fifty feet access to the back of the site for the proper, for the proper fire coverage. And with that, we've installed heavy-duty concrete to get them into the site for that proper coverage. Um, we also do have a public fire hydrant rate at the site access, so, um, there is emergency services available should, should anything happen. As with any storage yard, you're going to have vehicles with gas, things like that, you know, but they're not, um, they don't have any, um, gas containers, they're not doing any refueling on-site or... or, or they're not doing any blasting with, with things like that. They're, they're simply, um, they're laborers for, for concrete finishing, essentially.
Okay, that's helpful, thank you.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Okay, any other questions by the commissioners? I'll entertain a motion. And remember, in this motion, uh, the one thing they're asking for is a waiver along the sidewalk, but we have also brought up the entire issue around the storage unit. So is this, are we voting tonight about the storage unit, or does it?
If, yeah, if the, uh, if the planning commission wanted to, so if the planning commission wanted to vote on this, incorporate the storage unit, uh, then the language would be something like, uh, "Motion to approve with all staff comments", including the requested sidewalk waiver for that portion, uh, that's requested, uh, as well as, you know, approval of, uh, that the, that the, um, applicant will work with the staff to resolve, um, uh, conforming material, uh, that would be utilized around the storage, uh, the storage unit. And let's just say of hardy, probably at least hardy, I, I don't foresee it being brick, uh, but, uh, probably hardy board or something of that nature.
I would ask that if, if, if it's necessary for the approval that those materials be added, then we would certainly, we would certainly, um, entertain that for sure, we, we, we would comply with that.
I don't think, and staff would not be for just the unit as it sits, just having it out there on-site. But, um, limiting that to the two, probably two units, uh, would, and maybe mention, limit on the number of units as, as well. So that would be, that would be a way a motion could be made on that.
All right.
Before, before, yeah, I just wanna make sure, because the, the fact is, um, the sidewalk waiver is of critical importance. I wanna make sure that nobody has any questions with regard to the sidewalk waiver, because the cost and, and items associated with that are significant. So, um, if there are any questions on that piece, I'd be happy to entertain them.
All right. No other questions? I don't see anybody offering a, a, uh, motion. I'll do my best to offer the motion, okay, cuz it's, sounds like it's gonna be complicated. All right, I'll make a motion to accept with all staff comments, uh, granting the waiver for the sidewalk exclusion that goes along the steep embankment where the rocks and the trees are. Okay, going up to the bridge at the guardrail, and I'll also make the motion to include the allowance of no more than the two storage units, and they will be scanned according to what the planning director and his staff decide needs to be done in the future. And do I have a second? And did that motion cover everything?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Good job, by the way.
Say it again.
Thank you, no, I, I'm not repeating it, please play it back. Okay, we'll vote this by electronic vote. Thank you for telling us everything.
Thank you all for your time.
Motion to approve, pass with nine yeses.
All right, we still have some more to go, folks. So now we're at section number nine, we have several resolutions. And just so everyone knows, I'm gonna hit these very quickly, but all of these could be grouped if anybody wants to make a motion to group them. Okay, so we have a motion to group in a second, and we'll do this by voice, do I approve? Say yes.
Yes.
Anybody oppose, no? And these are for the street resolutions only. So these four resolutions, just quickly, uh, you have one in Anderson Point, another, and two of, three of them are in Durham Farms. They've all met the city's expectations and their requirements, so we're grouping them, we've accepted them, and we're moving forward and approve them. Do we need to do an electronic approval? Okay, we'll do an electronic approval for the grouping motion. No, for the grouping motion and the resolution acceptance. Yeah, and the acceptance of the resolutions.
Motion to approve, resolutions pass with nine yeses.
All right, thank you. Next, we have the staff level projects approved, okay? And all of you can see these, it's Grace Place. Actually, I'll just stop here, all of you've read this, so are there any specific questions you have that you wanna bring up?
I, I do wanna point out the elevation, we got it up on the screen. Okay, this is the elevation for the 921 West Main Street elevate, and it's just the elevation, it's not the site. So this is what, that glass building, uh, this is what it's gonna look like here pretty soon. So just wanna share that with everybody, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, that's great. And just for everybody out there, this is the 921 building, this is the one coming into Hendersonville, that's been deserted for a long time. So it's gonna get a much-needed facelift and a whole new life, and it looks, it looks very good. It's gonna make the west side of our town look much better.
Yes.
All right, anything else that we need to talk to about that?
No, sir.
All right. Next thing is beyond that, is the staff level projects pending. So you can see all of these, uh...
I have a question on one.
Okay, do we have, go ahead, Commissioner Slatter, you have a question?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just one question, if someone on staff could, um, expand a little bit on the MOT Partners' property consolidation at 128 Sanders Ferry. That's the property with the brick house, what, what are they consolidating? I know that's a very deep piece of land off of Sanders Ferry. Caitlin, what are they doing?
Caitlin, you wanna share that?
So we had received some plans, initial plans back in June, uh, for two buildings, um, retail strip, um, on that corner of Cages. It does not include the house. That is a separate property. The, but they have not come back with a resumé on those plans for the site plan, where, had comments for them, um, as well as for the site, the plat, we have not received those back.
And it's a, uh, you haven't, you all haven't seen it yet, but it's a, it's a very nice plan. It's a, it's a significant investment over there, uh, commercial development.
Okay, commissioners, do y'all have any other questions about any of the staff level projects pending? All right, we'll skip ahead, planning director comments.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I do have a few things that I wanna share, uh, this evening. Uh, I wanted to give you an update, uh, that the New Maple Glen Combined Development Plan, that's right across the, the street, uh, the Southeastern was doing, uh, on that property, uh, that did pass the first reading of BOMA, and it's going to the second reading, uh, at their November the 18th meeting. Uh, also, as you can see, Jim and Nick's, uh, is, uh, I believe they're now open, they did have a soft opening, um, and... Grand openings tomorrow, and, uh, so I think some people had some really good experiences there in the, in the soft opening. So real nice, real nice folks there, uh, that are, uh, that have, uh, built that. Uh, so, uh, that's gonna, that's gonna be happening here, um, grand opening tomorrow. Also, uh, the In-N-Out Burger, and I might have a picture, so that, that building, take a good look, that will be coming down here shortly. Uh, the, uh, In-N-Out Burger site will, they've already started site demolition, uh, and they should start building demolition here sometime very shortly, and then after that, uh, start construction. Uh, so that's really cool. Also wanted to note, um, uh, one of my favorite restaurants, Dos Bros, is coming to where the Cajun steamer was. So that's kind of, that's kind of exciting, uh, so I think that'll be a nice addition, uh, to our restaurants. Uh, and also, uh, just to let the, uh, the planning commissioners know, uh, Zach will be sending out something on that Title VI training. We do need to get that wrapped up, and we'll send out a reminder to that, uh, we need to get confirmation, everybody got that done? As well as our annual, uh, training as planning commissioners, uh, we're gonna have some recordings for y'all to watch, and Zach will be getting that out in the, in the coming weeks as well. Also, um, the, uh, the BOMA, uh, they did, uh, approve the zoning ordinance and, uh, that the, uh, planning commission recommended, so, uh, good work, uh, for you guys. And, um, and I believe in, at the BOMA meeting, I'm pretty sure BOMA act, they read, they read the whole thing. They had a lot, they had some questions, and, uh, but, uh, I really appreciate, uh, your all's involvement in that, and I do appreciate BOMA as well in their diligence. They did have a couple of changes that I just wanted to note to you, uh, where we had a mi- minor regional retail artistic signage, uh, they did change that to where you had to be in a planned development, uh, to have the ability to pursue that approval through the planning commission. Uh, also, uh, in dealing with signs, uh, they changed some things where, uh, you have to get rid of your grandfather non-conforming sign if you, your use changes outside of the, uh, major category that it's in. So if it's a restaurant, going to a restaurant, that won't require it, uh, but if it's a restaurant going to an office, you're gonna have to remove, uh, that, the non-conforming pole sign. So we got that squared away. Also, um, on signs, on non-conforming signs, uh, in order for them to be abandoned, we did have 90 days in the recommendation, and, uh, BOMA changed that to 365 days, which is probably pretty, pretty fair, because, uh, as Barry knows, when you're selling some of these properties, uh, it, nothing gets taken care of in 90 days. It takes, it takes a diligence period to do that. Also, in SR2, they changed the width of SR2 zoning, uh, from 60 foot to 70 foot, uh, that was a change. And then on EV chargers, the minor EV charging station areas, uh, they upped it from 50 feet from the street to 80 feet, uh, to match, uh, what major, uh, uh, charging stations were. So those were some of the different, uh, changes that were, uh, that were made for that. Uh, also, just to let you know that, you know, we'll be having our December the 2nd planning commission meeting, and our meeting in January will be on the 6th. And on that meeting on the 6th, uh, I'll have the year-end report for 2025, and I'm gonna go over a lot of different things, and I'm gonna talk about some stuff about population projections and some, some kinda really interesting things, uh, that the staff is doing, uh, about population, uh, projections. Also, just ending, uh, here, my comments, uh, you know, we've got Thanksgiving coming up in this month, and, you know, it'll be December before we're back, uh, but I, I just wanted to, to kinda end my comments, uh, just, uh, that myself and the staff are very thankful to work, uh, with this, uh, with this planning commission, and, um, that the planning staff, uh, remains optimistic about our great, about our great community. As you know, we deal with a lot of different things, and this planning commission deals with a lot of different things, and oftentimes, they're negative-based, uh, but, uh, it's coming from a place in our community where people just care desperately for our community, and they're just very passionate about it, and I think we all understand that. Uh, but I definitely don't want us to forget, uh, you know, to also tout the great things, uh, in our community, and all those things that, you know, we all, we all enjoy. Those things like, you know, some of us might be going on vacation, and then that feeling you have when you come back to Hendersonville after vacation, and what that feels like, because, you know, you live and work in, in a great, in a great community that is, uh, you know, that is a, a very special place. And so all those different things, you know, that make our community great, I just encourage, you know, everybody as we deal with folks, you know, into 2026, that are dealing with things, we're having public hearings, and we're having very passionate, you know, conversations and concerns, uh, that, that, that folks keep in mind to also look and, uh, not, notice, uh, and acknowledge the very positive things, you know, about our great community. And there, there are so many. And this planning commission, and the different decisions you've made in this, in this previous year, uh, you know, are impacting the future of our community in significant ways, and, uh, I appreciate that effort. And I know this takes time, and as I'm talking, it's taking more time away from your family, but I just wanna acknowledge that the role each of you play, uh, is very important, and I appreciate the sacrifice that you, not only you, but that your family makes, uh, so you can be here, uh, asking the questions and making, uh, informed decisions, you know, uh, about our great community. So that's all I had, that was maybe a little bit long, but I just wanted to share that, Mr. Chairman.
And I'll ask for a motion to adjourn, please. Now I have a motion, I have a second. All of, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, y'all have a great night.